Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
House Member Gelderlos?
Here.
Meringa?
Here.
Norca?
Here.
Steenstra?
Here.
Truus?
Here.
Vanderwall?
Here.
And Mayor Maas?
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Brandon Hahn from Ivan Rest Christian Reformed Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. And we're going to follow that by the pledge of allegiance. Pastor, welcome.
Yep, thank you. Let's pray. Lord God, it says in Scripture that you watch over every area and aspect of our lives. You see our waking up and our lying back down. You see our going out and our coming back in. You oversee every piece and part of who we are, and that includes our civic lives as well. So, Lord, as we go about the business of our town tonight, we pray that you will bless us with discernment and wisdom, and that everything we do this evening will be to your honor and glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us tonight. Appreciate it very much. Council, you have before you an amended agenda. It's got one additional item, and that's an authorization to hire John at the Clean Water Plant. So is there a motion to approve that amended agenda? Support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. We also have our minutes from our last meeting, September 11. You've had a chance to take a look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Support.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out on those minutes? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Okay. Next presentation of bills. Hefty amount again tonight, about $730,000. Dennis, anything you'd like to point out? Jane, anything you'd like to point out on those bills?
It is a hefty amount, but one of the things to note is it does include a roughly $200,000 check for the Heritage Park Board Block project, which is currently underway. And then it also includes a $40,000 check for a used vehicle. So what looks like a lot of money is not a lot of vendors.
Okay. All right. Council, any questions on any of the bills tonight for either Jane, Dennis, anybody else, any of the department heads? They're all here tonight. If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $730,186.63? And support. Any other final comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa?
Yes.
Norca?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
And Mayor Maas?
Yes. Well, it's time for public comment. And I see I actually have a couple relatives in the group and some friends from a long time ago. So anybody like to address the council? Public comment, please just come up to the podium, give us your name, address, so Marcy can get that, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Carolyn, welcome.
Carolyn Frederick, 3848 Crowfoot. Later on in your agenda, you're going to be dealing with the 34th Street property potential options. I know Dennis has recommended option one. I'm recommending anything but option one. You purchased the property to be used as an expansion of the park system. And I also know from longtime conversation, the properties on the south side of 34th Street are very prone to flooding. And I know in past decades, there's been discussion of purchasing them just because to get them out of the flood zone and to turn it into park properties. Long-term goal of the Parks Board is to expand the park. Why do you buy something, create park property, and then turn around and sell it? Part of it. It's a house. If people want that house, they can always move it someplace else versus demolish it. But you've got the property for expansion of parks. I guarantee you, you sell off even a little portion of that, five, maybe 10 years down the road, somebody's going to say, "Why didn't you keep that? You had it." I don't see the purpose of selling off park property, because that's what you're going to do. You're going to partition it off, but it still was purchased for park property expansion. Why sell off park property? So anything but one. My own personal preference is three, but two and three and four, they're all to me much better than option one.
Appreciate the comments. Carolyn? Anybody else like to address the council?
My name is Sueann Watkins, and my address is 3389 Wayburn Avenue, which is Kiddy Corner across from the 34th Street property. And I too am really concerned about the options that were presented. I think the best option is option three also, because I think renting or selling that part of the property would create a lot of problems with flooding, like the other woman said. And also, I think that if it's turned into a parking lot, it would really ruin the neighborhood feel and create a lot of extra traffic and people using that property at all hours of the night. So whatever, I think probably option three is what I think would be the best, but I guess that's up to you guys to decide. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Thanks for being here tonight. Anybody else like to address the council? Labor?
My name is Becky Dykes. I reside at 3540 Apache Court Southwest. I'm also the current president of Friends of Buck Creek, which is the local watershed organization that works to improve the overall health and water quality of Buck Creek. And so I'm also here to speak on the potential sale of the, or splitting that property that was purchased at 3408 34th Street last March. And as you are aware, that property does sit right on Buck Creek. And so Friends of Buck Creek is here, or I'm here on behalf of Friends of Buck Creek to ask council to give some additional consideration to option three, which Mr. Durham had put before the council of demolishing the house and turning that area into green space. We see a very valuable opportunity here for creek restoration. And that will both improve the water quality and beautify the Buck Creek Trail. So we work with an organization called ALGRO, the Lower Grand River Organization of Watersheds, which I believe some of you are familiar with. And a lot of that work is trying to restore riparian borders along the creeks. What that does is it helps with flooding. It helps keep temperatures down so that we can have a healthy creek that will continue to be an environment for the trout that exist. If you're not aware, we are lucky enough to have trout in Buck Creek from about Lemery Park through the Grand River. But that is threatened by the continuing temperatures that have been rising in the creek. One way to combat that is to plant trees and restore riparian border, which is essentially native plants along the creek. And we are advocating for that to happen, you know, in as much as city property as possible. But here with this property, there's the potential, right at the beginning of a trailhead here, for almost like a mini park. You could beautify that area by planting trees, installing that riparian border, and also maybe, you know, benches, a native garden that would beautify the creek as well. So I know that ALGRO loves to be invited to come and speak on the specifics of how those environmental, you know, how these types of initiatives can improve water quality. And so I'm just asking council to, you know, just take a moment, slow down, and consider having them out to share a vision for what that area along the creek could be for our community. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Thanks also for your service on the board of Friends of Buck Creek as chairperson of that. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? Come on up. Mr. Watkins, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jack Watkins. I live at 3384 Wayburn Avenue, and I am also adjacent to the property that we were discussing, 3408. I would say option three is a better option. I'm totally against the idea of a parking lot in that area, because it would increase the traffic, and that's already a strange corner to begin with. It would, like she says, create a heat sink, and it would warm the area. And then the light, to light the parking lot, to keep it as parking lot standards, would be light pollution, which is right adjacent to my windows, bedroom windows. So I'm very much against that, but I would like the idea of having a nice park. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Anybody else like to address the council? Welcome.
Hi. My name is Lynn Decker. I live 3377 Wayburn, right beside the Watkins. And I just agree fully with them. The third option is the best. I'm totally against a parking lot for the traffic and for just what occurs even at the end of the, at the back end of the cemetery on, you know. I just would rather have that stay where that is and not a parking lot beside our homes. I think it would devalue everything. And I'm okay with a nice park, but let's try to keep it an actual neighborhood that's a nice place to live. So.
Thanks. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else like to address the council? Ben, welcome.
Thank you. Not often that I come up here to see you.
It's been a while.
Ben Wykem, 4276 42nd Street. I agree, we don't need another parking lot. Another piece of blacktop there certainly would not be beneficial. There's sufficient parking in the neighborhood, especially for any use of that property. The thing that makes the most sense to me is sell the house. Now you've got some cash. You can do necessary upgrades to the bridge and the building. You've kept the majority of the new property, which I'm very happy that we got. Selling the house certainly won't take away from that. But it makes more sense to sell it, bring some cash in, rather than try to demolish the house. It's going to cost you thousands of dollars to do that, which doesn't make much sense to me. So, thank you.
Good. Thanks. Appreciate those comments. Anybody else like to address the council? Bruce? Janie? Anybody else? Last call? Matt's authorizing the relocation of Poling Precinct Number Two. And Marcy's got a great memo in there, kind of a history about that. And it sounds like you turned this around very quickly after, it was at Hope Christian Reformed Church on Barrett, which has now become Faith Presbyterian. They do not want to have a precinct there anymore. And first you reached out to First Reformed, and they're very happy to have us. So. Anything else? What am I missing?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. But there was a quick turnaround. It was kind of unexpected. We weren't planning on it. But Brittany and I had toured a couple of different places and options, but we're limited on where we can go. So we reached out to a couple other churches, and First was the most accessible that we thought for everybody. So we were happy to go there.
Well, thanks for your hard work in finding a place, substitute place on real short notice.
And then it will be effective for the November election, too.
Yeah. Any questions for Marcy on Precinct Two location change? JR?
Out of curiosity, do you have a backup for every precinct? I mean, you turned this around so quickly.
No. We're so limited, and we try to keep it in that area. And on that side of town, we're kind of limited on where we can go. There's not as many options. We looked at Olivet, the Rock Church, and a couple of other places. But this is going to be the best that we think, so.
Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a general question, I guess. So first of all, thank you so much for quick work on that. Good job. It's just interesting when I look at the map here. The precinct location for Poling doesn't necessarily have to be in the precinct. But I'm just curious, what are the requirements as far as like distance apart from other precincts, if any, or where they're supposed to be located?
Yeah. We try to get them as close within that precinct, but it's not always possible with the lines, the way that they are drawn. I don't want to change the lines and the districts at all right now. We did that last year. We didn't actually, granted, we didn't have to make any changes with ours, so that was very nice. But I don't anticipate making any other changes to the Poling locations going into 2024 and after that. Maybe 2025, we can look at some different setups. But for 2024, I want to keep it consistent going into the presidential year, so.
Well, the last change we made was moving Precinct One over to the Commons Building, which is.
And that's been a great move.
Yeah. I was just curious, because it's interesting, because you've got Three, Four, and Five all in Precinct Five. And I wasn't sure if there were specific requirements about distance apart from one another or distance, you know, from the precinct that it's actually Poling for.
Yeah. And this one is directly.
Or accessibility, right?
You can see the parking lot from one right to the other. It's just one block over.
Right. Yeah. Obviously, you want accessible locations and adequate parking and entrances and.
Precinct Two was located in the basement of that church, so it was a little hairy to get down to the basement for some people. And the proposed precinct at First Church is directly in. It's very accessible. So that was the benefit, I thought, of going with that one.
Great. Yeah. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Marcy? If not, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 3325? That's a resolution to relocate the precinct to Poling Place to First Reformed Church in Granville. Support? And support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
House Member Norca?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Maas?
Yes. Next item is the consent agenda, a number of reports under there. The August investment and the police report, also the minutes from the September Planning Commission meeting and the downtown development authority meeting as well in September. Also authorization, there's a memo in there about fire monitoring vendor agreement. And under purchase orders and requests, an irrigation upgrade at Wedgewood Park. So approval of the consent agenda, because there's some purchases on there, would be in the best interest of the city. So any questions or any comments, any council members or questions for department heads on any of those items? Justin?
Yeah, just a comment on the irrigation system. I know that Charlie has done good work, and I trust that. I just, again, the idea of looking for bidding out the contracts, and that one did not have a bidding of a contract. So I recognize that the rest of the city is using this company for irrigation, but I just personally fear that we could get to a point where we're relying on certain companies as, you know, that's our city's provider. And as a city, we don't really have providers for things. We go out and see who has the best option for us. So I guess I would just ask if on that one, not to give Charlie more work, but if we could hold off and see if we could get another bid on that, just to see what else is out there.
Charlie, any comments on that?
No, that's fine with me.
Okay. Council? Randy?
I realize in this economy how hard it is to get competitive bids in the environment that we're in. But the flip side of it from, you know, this side of the chair or this council is to do our best job to make sure that we try to obtain competitive bids if we can, not because there's a lack of trust for the vendor, certainly not Charlie. It's just the best way to keep everybody honest. Sometimes it's just competitive bids. I think most of us, if we do things around our house, we get two or three prices. So, and then again, with that said, I understand how competitive and crazy this market is. A lot of people don't even, contractors don't want to return calls. But I guess I would just, you know, encourage you, if we can get as many bids on contracts, I mean, that's what our job is, just to do our due diligence, so.
I'm fine with that, too, if that's the way that we want to go. But were we hoping to get this worked on yet this fall or spring?
Yes.
This fall, if possible? Okay.
I'll reach out a couple longer than next councilman.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any harm in.
Thoughts?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either. I do appreciate knowing, having a relationship with a vendor and knowing the work that they do. So I'm fine with going with them. I'm fine with getting another bid, but I hope we end up going with who we always go with. And, you know, it's obvious in number three, we're doing the same thing. We're going to the City of Walker, and we're saying, "Hey, who have you used? Who have you vetted for this?" And we're going to one person for the fire monitoring vendor, because we know they're darn good, and that's who we want to go with. So that's, I don't think it's a huge deal. I'll go with it, but I'm hoping that we can stick with who we know does good work for the city.
I mean, we personally at our home use Winchell as well, and I know they do good work. And I know they're always fairly priced, and they do show up when they say they do, and I'm fine with that. But I'm good with, you know, seeing who else is out there and see if they can beat the price. But I'm fine with either option.
Well? Okay. So it seems to be consensus that we remove item number four from the consent agenda. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city as amended items one, two, and three?
Support.
And support? Any other comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
House Member Steenstra?
Yes.
Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Norca?
Yes.
And Mayor Maas?
Yes. Dennis, city manager's report, number of items tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is the amended and restated sewage disposal agreement that has been given to the council twice before. It was originally sent to you with a number of changes and recommendations to amend and consolidate the many changes that we've had over the years that the agreement has been in place. And then as the process unfolded and the partner jurisdictions were approving their agreement separately, there were a couple of small little items that were included in the last Redline version that we gave you two weeks ago. Randy's here. He handled most of the legal stuff for the city, of course. And then Todd and Scott are both here if they want to ask questions about the operations of the Clean Water Plant.
Randy, anything you want to add to that? And I'm sure you've spent a lot of time with us, so.
Yeah, as did the other members of the team from the city. You know, there's three or four agreements or amended agreements, at least as I think of it. And there was a regulatory ordinance as well that pulled into this. And so now things get consolidated into what I think is a fairly concise statement of what the relationship is with our customer communities. All of them have now at least had the opportunity to review it and are okay with it, but they're opposed to you. So it's a good working relationship with them. It took a lot of time, just because of the amount of effort that had to go into it, facing all the different agreements that were being consolidated. And so I think personally, it's a good agreement for the city. It will be helpful for your staff to have this agreement in place going forward as various members drop out of the team going forward. And I would certainly recommend you adopt it. I'm here to answer questions, but I think many questions you may have relate to the operations of it. And then, of course, Todd's here for that.
Right. Thirty-year agreement with another 20 years of extension, so I'm not sure I'm going to be around at the end of that.
I mean, as well, I suspect. And this relationship really goes back to 1966. So it's been a long-term relationship with our customers in setting up the plan. And it's, I think, been a good journey for the city.
Yeah. Couple new sections in Jamestown?
Yeah, four new sections or eight added, as I noted last time, in Jamestown for expansions. The various customer communities are now signatories to the agreement. As before, it was really an agreement with Auto County Road Commission only. And they in turn had various agreements with each of their customer communities. Now the communities are all signatories to the agreement and have the opportunity to come to the table and participate in the development of the agreement. And again, they're all on board with it.
Council, questions for Randy or Dennis or folks from Clean Water Plant? Hey, Randy?
I was just going to say, if anybody knows this document well, it would be Randy Cracker. So we trust you hugely on this one.
Yeah.
And they're assuming this is in the best interest of the city, so.
We appreciate that. It's been a long process, and good input from your staff all around. I certainly do recommend that you adopt the agreement.
Other comments, questions?
Yeah, just thanks for all the work on it. I did read through it. It was actually pretty easy to understand, as far as contracts and legal documents go, I thought. So nice job in making it very streamlined. It also looks like there's a number of assurances for the city to help protect our interests. So that was pretty apparent in there, too. So I think it's a really good agreement. Thanks for all your work on it, Randy, and those others that were involved, Clean Water Plant folks and.
Any other comments, questions? Now, is there a motion to adopt the amended and restated sewage disposal agreement? And have the City of Granville enter into that agreement?
Support.
Motion, support? Questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
House Member Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Norca?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Maas?
Yes. Dennis, DDA Pavilion Rental Agreement. I see we've got Teresa here tonight.
Yes, our DDA director, Teresa's here. Teresa, do you want to say a few words about why we're doing this and answer any questions that the council might have?
Sure. I mean, a paper will be used to bring people into the downtown more often than just going to have events. So we've now created this beautiful structure. We've had, not an overwhelming number, but we've had numerous people ask payment that this came out for open houses or a big craft fair. And we've never had any paperwork in place to allow that. So kind of borrowed from other cities nearby what they've done. We have developed over, made some suggestions and asked to change some things. We've kept the price quite low, because the idea is, why not allow people to be down here when the businesses are closed and enjoy this beautiful space? So kind of want to give it a year, see what happens, come back and reevaluate if any tweaks need to happen. But we've kept it really simple for the city, and the people have to provide everything on their own. So basically, it's a space rental, and that is it. Happy to answer any questions.
I've just got one question out of curiosity. Home-cooked food can be brought into private events, but no cooking there. Just wondered, what was the reason for that, no cooking?
I think I just, any city that I looked at that was running outdoor spaces had that in there. So rather than people hauling grills down and doing their own, and then if, we don't have a way to monitor if they're selling that or not. And so then you're getting into health issues. And so I think it just seems simpler. But they could hire a food truck to come down for their private event, or if they're doing an open house, they could have food catered in. I think we just don't want people bringing their own personal grills out there and.
Good thought.
Yeah.
Randy?
Yeah, I read through it, and I'd love to see as many people use that space as possible. The only concern that I have with this is Section Nine. Regardless if it's a craft show or a car show or whatever the event is, oftentimes there is probably food involved or a food truck or a hot dog cart or this or that. We, as a city, have a right to cancel the event due to, you know, bad weather, tornado warning. We, as a city, have a right to cancel the, cancel the event due to, you know, bad weather, tornado warning, whatever it is, but the vendors do not have that same option. And my concern is so many of the vendors or the participants are purchasing their products, or setting up the day before, or spending a lot of money to be there. If you're a food truck, you probably wait to the last moment to buy your inventory, and I think nowadays, most people have the option of maybe, you know, forty-eight hours or thirty-six hours before seeing what the weather's going to be, and this is going to be a blowout for them, and they may want to have that option to, you know, cancel. I understand no refund will be given, they'll get a credit on another event, but that could be a year away, depending on the calendar, and in the meantime, you've got a lot of people who have maybe spent money on advertising, or food, or whatever, and I'm just thinking, well, maybe we want to give potential vendors an opportunity to pull the plug on the event, maybe a couple days out if the weather looks really bad, so that's my thought.
Chair?
I'm sure Teresa poured over these hours that the pavilion is available for, but let's just say, maybe there was a homeschool group, or a Bible study that wanted to use it on a Tuesday at ten a.m., would we entertain the option? I know you said, you know, to, to, you know, opportunize when businesses are closed. Is that something we would consider?
I think it would really depend how many people they're expecting. I don't want, I mean, I guess we have the farmer's market on Tuesdays.
Tuesday was a bad idea, yeah, that was a bad, that was a bad choice.
No, it's not, I mean, see, like, it works on Tuesdays when we bring a lot of people in and all of you work around it, so I think I kind of chose the hours so there was never complication with your clients and your business hours, it just seems to make more sense, but I think I'd rather take it on a case-by-case basis than open it up for full day on Monday as well.
I mean, I agree with you stating the hours that it's available, and, and especially on Monday through Thursday, or through Friday, not even starting till four o'clock. I just wanted to know if we would entertain, like, an extended circumstance? And if not, that's okay, too.
I think there's nothing for discussion, if that's why we're here, so, yeah, I mean, if you want to start it earlier, we can, but I feel like to do that, we would need to.
Have you ever gotten a request for somebody that was interested in doing it on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday at ten to two?
No.
Then I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that a lot.
Randy?
I'd, I'd also point out that nothing prevents the, the city from modifying this agreement at any time, and if, if you do get a lot of requests for things that are outside the current draft, it's fairly easy to make some modifications, come back, but at this point in time, as Teresa indicated, we really don't have any, any demand, if you will, so there's really no reason to change it at this point, I don't think. But, but again, that's your call, not mine, but that, it, it does allow for, for the agreement to come back to you and change it as, as you see fit, with practically little notice necessary to do that, so.
Randy, I'm fine altering that. Like, I, I see your point, I just don't want a lot of people also canceling it at the right, like, but I think we could certainly put in there that you can recycle for a later date, or if that's not possible, a refund, you know, forty-eight hours out.
Yeah, no, I like this.
No, I do.
I just understand how much money and sweat equity people spend the day before, only to say, we can pull the plug, but they don't have that option, even though they know there's a huge thunderstorm that's going to come through in the middle of their event.
That, that's my point. That's fair.
You know, so.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks, Teresa. What you said right from the get-go was, here's something, this is a start. We put something together, got input from Randy, Randy just said, hey, it can come back, we can make changes, but I just appreciate you putting it on paper, us as a city, making it available to people to rent out, and we see what happens. I mean, maybe down the road, we're making five hundred a crack, you know, there's all kinds of demand for it, but I, I'm just joking, we wouldn't do that probably, but I, I just think, hey, it's here, let's approve this tonight, and then we'll see how it goes, and we can make adjustments.
Is that an awesome?
Yes.
Some. Support.
Some support. Josh?
I just had a couple of questions, I guess. I like the idea of it being available for people to rent, and I think this is a very good start for an agreement. I saw that we wouldn't be allowing it to be rented during downtown events, but that also include outdoor events that the library's hosting in the pavilion.
Does the library host Sunday night thing for them?
Like, they'll have the Thursday night series during the summer in the pavilion, where different, there's music, or entertainment, things like that. Would we be coordinating with them, then, even though it's not technically a Granville event, it's a KDL event? But that, just want to be sensitive to that, too, because they do use the space down there quite a bit, too. And then also, I was just curious, I'm assuming it doesn't come with any reserved parking, use of the pavilion, correct?
No.
What about any city signage for a private event, or would it include closing, like, you know, partway through the parking lot there, there's those columns that can be raised to kind of block off part of the parking?
No.
So people would be able to park, wouldn't be able to park right up against the pavilion?
No.
No?
Because that's so labor-intensive for DPW, because those offices come out of the ground, they all have to be carted out.
Okay.
And installed, so, again, I'm trying to keep this as simple as possible this first year, so we can see, and if there seem to be issues and things that we need to change, I guess I'd like to get a few, like, done first. Even with the farmer's market, we just pull barricades out, because those others, unless you're doing an actual event, that's lasting a significant amount of time, they're not very convenient.
Okay, yeah, wasn't sure how much was required.
But if it's after hours, that parking lot is pretty sleepy, so I don't see parking being a problem.
Okay, I guess I was just curious about the signage, too, like, might be nice to have some signs to offer, just indicating it's a private event going on, or would that be on the?
I think that would be on them. I mean, we could potentially look into it, but again, I don't want to have to be coming down here every time someone rents out the space, like, you're then committing an individual to show up and put the signs out and take them back, so it's kind of.
Right, I guess I was just thinking to have them available that they could use and then return.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Or just something, just because I'm thinking if I would have an event down there and wanted it to be kind of a private event, it's kind of in the middle of a public space, just to kind of let the, you know, the public know that it's not just a, you know, it's not a downtown event that's open to everybody.
Yeah.
But it's kind of pretty open from all sides, so it might be a little tricky that way.
It's easy enough to make a couple of day frames, it's if I can come up with a place that they just know you can access these if you want them and put them back when you're done.
Yeah, that might be nice, like, either end of the pavilion or something. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Randy, did you have a comment?
I would say I'm happy to support it, but I still have reservations about number nine, so we'll just have to work through that.
No, I'll change number nine.
Just whatever's, just kick it back to whomever. My concern is there's, there is a lot of potential money that people could spend being, buying supplies and all of that, and, and having never been in that position of people who do those events, I don't think people fully understand the commitment they make, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I, I heard that we wanted to get this under our belt and get it going, but I think with a couple of tweaks, I think, I see Teresa taking notes. I would suggest that under section two, the pavilion is available for rent as follows, there's the schedule, but let's put an asterisk under that that says, or other times to be considered on a case-by-case basis. And then, under section nine, at the very end there, it says, no refund will be given, I suggest we add, unless there are extenuating circumstances with approval of the DDA Director.
See, who made the motion and you, you agree to that as well?
And then, one more thing. Teresa, when do you, just as a guess, when do you think we might have some experience with this, as renters coming forward, where we can say, we've got a good sample size and we want to come back to the council, maybe towards the end of the spring? Do you think we'll have some?
Early summer. We have someone who wants to rent it in October. She reached out at the beginning of summer, and I said I can't hear her do that, but potentially she wants to do a kids' craft market. I'm not going to push it a lot this time of year, but I figure February, March to start getting the word out, because so many open houses, and, so I would say after that whole open house season, we're going to have a better idea if people are going to be invested or not. So, early summer.
Okay, so we'll come back to the council at that, in that time period, with some suggested changes, if they're warranted, or just to give you, here's the update, it's working great.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds good. We have a motion in support to approve the rental agreement as, as amended. Any other comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwall?
Yes.
Sorry, Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhut?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. This next item, sale of thirty-four oh eight, thirty-fourth Street. You've got a memo in there, we have a number of public comments tonight. Anything else you want to add?
In hopes, Mr. Mayor, the, the recommendation is to sell the property and to engage the Realtor, basically, that worked on the transaction when the city bought the property, she has given us a discounted rate quote for us, so I would just go back to the person that's familiar with the property. Second choice would be, or recommendation from staff would be, to demolish it and make it green space, so that the maintenance requirements going forward for Charlie's crew is not that intensive.
Council, thoughts? We had some discussion last time, JR, you weren't here, so.
Yeah, I guess I would just like to weigh in. I know I listened to the, to the recording from last time, and I guess I first appreciate you guys waiting, one, to sit on it for two more weeks and make sure we're doing the right thing, but two, to include my thoughts, so. Yeah, I've been over this a few times in my own head. I bet I've run past that property nine million times on, on the trail. I know exactly what, what, what's there, what it leads up to. I was in all the meetings that we were, you know, except for the last one, two weeks ago, about what the, the initial purpose was, the, the intent was, the acquiring of the six acres on the south side. And, and I think I, I concur with the majority from last time, that I think the, the sale of this property would be in the best interest of the city, and like Mr. Wykamp, taking some cash and moving forward to some other park projects that we have already lined up, that, you know, city manager Durham, you know, said, hey, we should knock out these projects before we take on a new one. So, I, I concur with that sentiment from last time, and I'm open to any other comments, anybody else in here?
Anybody else have comments?
Yeah, I have, I have comments, and I'm thankful for, for those comments, and I'm not sure we have a majority on that or not, but we'll find out in a little while. I'm in total agreement, and, and still am, that we should keep the house, and the reason being, that's the only way to prevent the parking lot, okay? I'm so pleased to see my good friend Ben Wykamp here, who I served with so many years on the Park and Rec Board, because it's him who I thought of in wanting to protect the character of this neighborhood. Ben lives right next to Heritage Park, and he looks over on Heritage Park, and is a guardian of Heritage Park, and serves, as I said, on the Park and Rec Board. Anyway, whenever I want to get a, a friendly, you know, jab, rise, with my good friend Ben, I joke about, and it's a joke, Ben, about buying a house, because it always seemed to me, okay, as a young parent, which I was at one point, back in the last century, when I started serving on the Park and Rec Board, with Ben Wykamp, by the way. It always seemed to me to get to the, the play area in Heritage Park, man, it is a long walk, okay, for the family. Boy, if we could just open up an entrance on the other side of Heritage Park by buying a house over there, that would just be perfect and ideal for me. Well, you know, nobody in the neighborhood would agree with that, I'm sure, and Ben certainly does not agree with that, and I don't need to, you know, have him come to the microphone to affirm that, but it was him that I was thinking about, in mind to save the character of that neighborhood, because we've already seen a piece of paper produced with a proposal for a parking lot on that piece of property, and the only way to prevent a future council from not doing that is to keep the house there, and to put it in private hands, and that's my view.
You know, I'll, I'll stand by where I've fallen right from the get-go, and that is option number three, and it's, I'm glad you're here tonight, Watkins, I'm glad that Lynn was here tonight as neighbors, because the comment was made two weeks ago, well, you know, we're not sure how the neighbors would feel about tearing that house down, so thank you for your comments, and the friends of Buck Creek, I mean, that's what we have talked about for the last, I've been on this council for almost four years. We've talked about buffer zones for the creek, we've talked about more green spaces. Ben, the whole Park and Rec Plan is talking about more green spaces in Granville. This is an ideal spot adjacent to green space to expand. Charlie talked about putting a parking lot in the cemetery where the chapel was torn down. We don't need a parking lot on this property, we make it green space. We make it a continuation of the trail, so I stand by option three. I know I'm in minority, but that's how my vote will be tonight.
Other comments, thoughts?
Just going around here.
Yeah, we'll just come around.
I have not changed my opinion. I agree with councilmembers Vanderwall and Truist. The purpose when we did this, we discussed the splitting of the property and the recuperation of some of the funds for the purpose of working on that bridge, and so this, this plan that, if we go forward with the selling of the house, that is in the spirit of the, the original meeting that was held on this property, and so I want to stick by that. We already have the Mill Race Park, that will be a great green space not too far away from there, that's already going to incur some cost to the city that we may still be trying to balance and figure out, so I personally am for the option of selling the home, the parking lot. I, I don't know who was ever considering that, but I don't think that was ever going to go anywhere.
Yeah, I agree, I don't like the idea of the parking lot either, and I appreciate the neighbors being here to kind of confirm that that's not something they'd want in their neighborhood as well. I actually kind of like the idea of selling the house and having somebody move it off the property, so that we could have the green space. I think it would be a shame to tear down a perfectly good house, when we know that we have a shortage of single-family homes in this area, and there's a housing crunch, especially homes that are kind of in that, you know, one hundred to three hundred thousand dollar range, you know, there's just not many of them out there, and a lot of people looking to move into town. So that would be my preference, I don't know how that would work. Can you sell the house contingent upon you moving it off the property? Is there a basement in that house? I don't even remember if there is or not, if there is?
Yes, sir.
Like an old Michigan basement?
Yes.
So, I guess that would be my thought, that that would be a win-win, is somebody gets a house, they move it somewhere else, we get some green space, but if that's not possible, I'm not really in favor of tearing down a house at fifty thousand dollars, just to have green space, because I don't think that's a great use of funds either, when, you know, they got a perfectly good house, so I guess my next option would be to sell the house, you know, as was, as was mentioned here, and use that money to put back into the parks, to work on the bridge, to offset some of the additional costs due to inflation that we're now incurring with Mill Race, with the project that we've already committed to there. It's unfortunate that those costs have gone up so astronomically in the last couple of years, but we've already committed some projects, and we could use some revenue to, to help pay for some of those, to finish it off, so that would be my thought, is sell the house, have them move it, or sell the house and let somebody else live there, and kind of maintain the character of the neighborhood, that status quo for the people that live there. You know, there's been a house there, there's been somebody living there, maintains the character of the neighborhood, so those are my thoughts.
I guess I'm next. I've kicked it around both ways. It certainly is a peculiar property, the way it sits on the corner like that. I was in there, it's not an unattractive property, but it's not a, it's not a must-have. But I just come back to Councilman Nordhook's position, is that we went into this, we said publicly, we're going to purchase this property for the reason of obtaining the six acres in the rares, and I think if we change our mind, and we don't do it, I think as a council, we lose credibility, I think city staff loses credibility, I think the optics are such that when you say this is the plan, you just have to go with the plan, and I think otherwise, our word means less, and, and that was the intention that we all went into this with. And, and I realize things happen, you know, between six months ago and now, I do think, you know, for.
I do think, you know, for Mr. Steenstra's concerns that, I mean, we do still have other options of purchasing green space down there. Friends of Buck Creek, we have the option of putting trees on the south side of the creek, which is more important than trees on the north side, if we feel there's that need, because they would shade, you know, the creek more and lower the water temperature. We still have a lot of great pathways and things we can do, but we said we were going to put the purchase, put the property back up for purchase and to respect the many people down there, and just, we need to keep our word, and that's what we need to do. So that's where I'll be supporting option one.
Somebody else have any other comments they'd like to make before I make any comments? You know, I think, for me, that was very easy. Option number two, to retain the property, that's, that's a hard no. To retain it as-is and just maintain it. And also demolishing the house and putting in a parking lot, that's for me a hard no as well. I mean, I think that would be very disruptive in the neighborhood, and I don't think that was ever, I mean, it's a possibility, but I don't think any of us thought, oh, yeah, let's do that. Although it may be convenient and so on to access that property still. So to me, it's either, you know, option number one or option number three, and I understand what Tim is saying to converting the property to green space. But I also understand Randy's comments, and that's when we made this decision, it was, and I appreciate it, how fast we moved. It was a special meeting. We moved very quickly. There were, I think, only four of us, and the thought was basically, buy the property, Dennis negotiated a great price for it.
Yeah.
And let's recoup as much of that so it doesn't hit the city budget. It's hard to find a house in Granville. It's next to impossible right now. And so I, I'm kind of in favor of, of option number one as well, selling off the property as a small, and I think that's how it's drafted, is it's a small-
To split it.
To split it, and so it meets the minimum requirements. We still have access across that bridge, which was another, right, selling point of this property, is instead of us spending hundreds of thousands, if not more, of dollars on a new bridge, there was an existing bridge which, which can be rehabilitated. So I think this is a good, good compromise. I understand what Tim is saying, because once it's sold, it's sold. But again, hopefully, we will have, you know, the bridge across the property and maybe get, pick up more property along the southern part. So that's, that's my thought. Randy?
Yeah, and should this pass the sale tonight, I just would like to encourage our city attorney to make sure there's a sold-as-is clause as we sell it, because there's a lot of peculiar things in that home.
Just wanted to-
(laughing)
Yeah. Well, and Randy has taken a look, so just kind of, just a reminder, to sell city property right now, do we need five votes, a supermajority?
Forget that.
Yes. So it would take five votes to approve the sale of the property. Josh?
Well, I don't know what anybody else thinks about my idea, or actually, I guess it was maybe Karen's idea about having somebody buy the property and move the house. Is that something we would discuss with a Realtor?
That's right.
As, you know, the possibility, or would we, you know, budge on the price if somebody was willing to do that? Is anybody interested in that option or not really?
I appreciate the creativity thing outside the box, but I, I don't think that that's something I would entertain.
Nor I.
Okay.
I don't think there's enough value to the structure to move it somewhere else. And you got to sell it first anyway, and if you want to demand that contingency, it's a no-go.
A lot of times, Josh, with moving a house, what people are doing today is taking bids, and they'll sell it for 100 bucks, and the cost to move it is probably in excess of $100,000, even just a block or two away. So it's just, it's not worth it. You know, it's, it's a great idea to save a house, but, you know, I find it interesting. Councilman Galdorlos talks about the quality of the house, and, yeah, we're going to sell it, you know? So I don't know.
Well, to your-
Thanks.
To your comments, I've never paid retail for a piece of property in my life, and I've always bought properties that were handyman specials or fixer-uppers. And for a young couple or for somebody who wants a great starter home, it's a great place.
All right.
So we'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Everybody want to make a motion about any of the options that are laid out?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we proceed with option one, the split of the property.
And the sale.
Right. Sale of the home.
Split and sale.
Support.
Motion support. Any other comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galdorlos?
Yes.
Merringah?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
No.
Truust?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, neighbors, for coming and letting us know your thoughts, and hopefully it's an acceptable outcome. Info City. Dennis, next item, printer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has hired a new HR assistant who has occupied the mayor's former office. For a couple of reasons, we have allocated that office space for the HR assistant, mainly, as Jane points out in her memorandum, the need for privacy and separation of information, confidential information to that office. So following that, the replacement of the printer requires a number of features, including scanning, copying, and printing, and needs to be separated from the normal workflow of the office space over in the city manager's office. So we're recommending purchase of this printer this evening for that purpose. And Jane is here, she can answer any questions on that purchase.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve a contract with Nordic Business Equipment in the amount of $2,525 for the purchase of that copier, scanner, printer in the best interest of the city?
Some move.
Motion and support there. All right. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringah?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truust?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Galdorlos?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Next item, bandsaw.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Department of Public Works, a bandsaw has died and ended its useful life here at the city. It was unplanned to replace that, so Charlie is recommending instead of using budget dollars to replace the tire changer, this is more important and needs to replace the bandsaw.
Okay. Some memo on that. Pictures. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the day, band saw from Branger in the amount of $3,099, 20 cents in the best interest of the city?
Some move.
Motion and support. Any comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truust?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Galdorlos?
Yes.
Merringah?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Next item, anti-nepotism waiver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a candidate for the clean water plant named John Grezick. Am I pronouncing that correctly, Todd?
Grezick.
Grezick. He is the father of a current plant operator, Logan Grezick, and so we are asking the council to waive the anti-nepotism policy to hire John. Todd's here, Scott's here, they can answer any questions about the hiring process and why this is important to the city.
I note that in the memo, they won't be working together, side by side, and-
And he doesn't supervise.
And the other doesn't supervise, which is probably a really good idea. Thoughts? Is there a motion?
Motion.
For the anti-nepotism waiver. Is there support for that?
Support.
Motion support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truust?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Galdorlos?
Yes.
Merringah?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Dennis, anything else?
The only thing I would like this evening to highlight, and Todd, can you please explain this? There's an upcoming trail event on, is it the 27th?
This Wednesday, 8:00 to 5:00, if I remember right, Auto Caddy Parks did an extensive trail extension behind our facility going over into Genesee and the area. Idem and Explorers Trail, I believe is what they're calling it. They put an extensive boardwalk system through there, and they're doing an open house basically at the bridge where they created an arch at the county line during that time frame. So they're, I don't think they're taking RSVPs, but if you, you know, want to participate, there's some contact information that we can issue. There's going to be parking to the west of the plant. They'll also be parking out in front of our plant and some shuttle, golf carts going back there. So that's, that's all I'm knowing at this point. I haven't heard anything in advance.
Thank you, Todd.
And then for the council's planning purposes, we are expecting to have a closed session at the next meeting so that Charlie can go over some of the tax appeal information he has. He has a, he has a tax appeal going to the tribunal in October and wants to give the council a briefing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember comments? Let's start Randy.
Nothing tonight, I don't think. Thank you.
Josh? Justin?
All right. I just want to thank everyone for all the thoughtful comments on the sale of the property and restate, you know, my commitment, I believe the commitment of the council to green spaces. I thought Tim, you know, you did a good job of explaining your position, even though I had a different viewpoint, but I am on board with the idea of looking for ways to continue to enhance green spaces. I just want to make sure that we are using the funds in a way toward projects we already have going on, but I heard what you had to say, and I agree with you on that. And then I just want to thank Teresa again for this initiative on the renting of the space and another great opportunity to showcase Granville and what we have and bring more people. So thank you for all of your work. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have one comment, and that's three cheers to First Reformed Church. That one of their pastors was here giving the invocation a while back, and she said, I'm willing to meet with any of you. I'm willing to hear what the needs of the city are, and we want to partner with the city. And, I mean, they're putting their actions to their words, so good job, First Reformed Church. That's it.
Well, I'll just say amen to that. That's that.
I know it was just this afternoon, but is there any, Teresa or anybody else who was here there from the DVA, the Reimagine Chicago Drive slash Crystal slash area, that was today, correct? Was it well-attended? Did we get some feedback? How did that go?
There were, I would say, 15 to 18 people, which they said they posted base and had nobody show up. And the survey currently, as of this afternoon, had 155 respondents, so they were very, very happy with that, and there's definite trends coming out. So mostly that 90% of the respondents said the intersection is unsafe and something needs to be done. And another, almost 4% said it is unsafe, but leave it alone. So you have about 94% of people admitting that intersection has-
Safety issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But everybody was excited and open, kind of two different, of the four, two that had risen to the top. So, yeah, they'll keep the survey going for one more week, and then probably come back and meet with department heads to talk through what all of that looks like and then present to the DVA again.
Thank you for the update, and one more proof is in the pudding of that space being well utilized, the comments for a community forum for-
Two hours today, three hours?
Three hours. Without interrupting, you know, other city business, so. Kudos to that. Obviously, Teresa, on that side of it, looking forward to the Fall Fest this weekend. We will have a scarecrow out for our business. It's probably going to be terrible, but if you want to vote for it, I appreciate it.
Thank you for making one.
So if you come by and laugh, that's okay, too. And then the last thought, I guess I want to say this out loud. Dennis and I were talking this morning at the fire truck dedication, per se, I guess, was about having, we talked about signs for like the DVA pavilion, but maybe signs for the neighborhood mini-grant. So if people wonder, well, why are there fire trucks in my neighborhood and why is there stuff going on? We just have some signs that, so when they, if and when they get approved, there's some signs in the area that say this was approved by the neighborhood mini-grant, and maybe that would encourage more applications. So that was one of Dennis's ideas today, but I thought we should say that out loud. I don't know who can put that into works, but probably Teresa. She's, you got a hotline to Amy, so I'm sure it's fine, so just want to say it out loud. Thank you.
Randy has a comment as well?
In line of what you just said, JR, on Sunday morning, my pastor from the pulpit advocated attendance at the Fall Fest this year, in large part because our young people group are putting a scarecrow together for the Fall Fest. But anyway, he announced it from the pulpit.
Oh, there you go. He probably wanted actual votes, though.
Yeah, a couple of comments. As JR mentioned, there was an event this morning. State Representative Carol Glanville, who was instrumental in getting an $800,000 grant for the city of Granville's fire apparatus, came and saw the equipment, along with a representative from state Senator Winnie Brink's office, so that was fun. JR went up in the air. Dennis and I stayed on the ground. Also had a nice tree planting event that Kyla was in charge of last week Saturday in the common space, which is beautiful space. We had about a dozen people. We all, we learned how to plant a tree properly so it lives more than the average of, what, 10 years? Something that will live for 100 years instead. So that was good. This week, this coming Saturday, there is another event, a tree planting event. No?
10/7.
Ah, 10/7, near the Department of Public Works building. So that will be a week from Saturday.
Right.
And then on the 14th, Kyla has an event on, kind of an open house informational meeting on the vacant lot on the corner of Sioux Court and South Big Spring, where she's got a number of things going on, some fruit trees, and it will be all about urban food forest, right? So anyway, that's a couple, couple of weeks from now, there'll be another reminder on that. Also, Jana Ostoff, who worked in our city office here, she gave a note that I think I have permission to read, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And it's addressed to this, to the city, city council and the mayor. And it was, as follows, "Thank you so much for everything that you do in the best interest of Granville. It has been a joy to work here and support the city that I love. It was a very hard choice to leave these amazing coworkers and department heads. I hope that our paths cross again. Our hearts remain dedicated and our health allows us to do great things. Yours in service, Jana Ostoff." So, nice, nice to hear. Her last date is going to be the 27th. When is that? Wednesday? Yes.
She's going to do taco, potluck, and then-
She's out of here after that.
That's what I got.
All right. Anything else? Anybody? Not? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move. Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourn, please say yes.
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 Any opposition, please say no. Great. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight.